Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for September 23rd, 2024. Will you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Here.
Corona Savagnano.
Here.
Devlin.
Here.
And we do have our corner.
If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Sitting may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-person public comment, please complete and submit a speaker request form to the clerk. Each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment. Members of the public may send a written comment, which is distributed to commission members and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date and agenda or off agenda item number to be sent as follows. Email a comment to boardclerk@saccounty.gov or mail a comment to 700 H Street, Suite 2450 Sacramento, California, 95814.
Thank you. That brings us to the non-contested portion of our agenda. Please call item number one.
So your item number one this evening is PLMP 2022-00251. It's a time extension located at 4601 Whitney Avenue on the north side of Whitney Avenue, approximately 550 feet west of Mission Avenue in the Arden Arcade community, and the environmental document is an addendum.
Good evening, Commissioners. Planning Director Todd Smith. As this item is a non-contested item, it's up to the commission whether you would like a full staff presentation. We are available if so, but if not, feel free to proceed.
Any requests for a presentation or any questions for staff this evening on item number one?
No, but would make a recommendation to move the agenda item when appropriate to do so.
Second. All right. We've got any other, look, any other Commissioners? Any questions for staff?
Nope.
I do want to give the opportunity for the applicant to address the commission if they're here and would like to, not required to, but all right. And any public comment?
There is no public comment currently.
All right. We have a motion and a second for staff recommendation. Any further comments? All right, please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Corona Savagnano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Hi.
And Raythal.
Yes.
And the motion carries with all members present.
Thank you. That moves us to the contested portion of the agenda. Please call item number two.
Item number two is PLMP 2019-00054. It's for a tentative subdivision map, special development permit and design review, and it is located approximately 300 feet north of the intersection of Excelsior Avenue and Belterra Lane in the Orangevale community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is Irving Huerta, Assistant Planner and Project Manager for the Excelsior Oaks Subdivision. I'll go ahead and begin this item with a brief presentation. The project site is located at the northern end of Excelsior Avenue. It's approximately 300 feet north of the intersection of Excelsior Avenue and Belterra Lane in the Orangevale community. As you can see, the project site is currently vacant and underdeveloped. The site is zoned agricultural residential, two acres, known as AR2. Surrounding uses include single-family residential to the north, agricultural residential to the east and south, and we do have a strawberry farm just west of the site. Do note that the project site is located along the fringe of the Sacramento and Placer County line. Therefore, the existing single-family residential development just north of the project site is actually located within the city of Roseville. So as you can see, basically anything that isn't highlighted, anything north, it's City of Roseville. So according to Sacramento County records, there's no history of prior entitlements associated with the subject site. Staff did review recent code enforcement violations and has concluded that there were two recent code violations. Those violations were for overgrown vegetation. However, those violations have been remedied and has since been closed. So the entitlement request includes the following: a tentative subdivision map to divide a 25.2-acre parcel into 12 new lots in the AR2 zoning district; a special development permit to allow for the proposed project to deviate from the following development standard, and that is the minimum public street frontage for lots three and four. It also includes a design review to determine substantial compliance with the Sacramento County countywide design guidelines. So there was an environmental document prepared for this project and initial study mitigated negative declaration. That document was released for public review on August 21st, 2024. Some of the impacts discussed in that document were air quality, hydrology and water quality, biological resources, and greenhouse gas emissions. The project would result in a less than significant impact with the implementation of mitigation measures. So this is an overview, like a zoom close-up, of the proposed tentative subdivision map. Again, to reiterate, the request again is to divide a 25-acre parcel into 12 new lots in the AR2 zoning district. The proposed lot size will vary in size between 2 to 2.3 acres. You can kind of faintly see right here, there are several building pads and building envelopes being shown, so it's, I know it's, might be a bit hard to see from here, but these are all building pads and building envelopes, and these lots are expected to be developed after the property is subdivided. Each lot will be required to be connected to public water, and each lot will also have its own septic system. As you can see as well, we do have new public roads essentially being proposed in order to give the lots access. So we do have this new public road running from east to west, and then we do have an extension of Excelsior Avenue, which ends over here in a cul-de-sac. So the new public road, the one that runs over here from west to east and vice versa, that one, that road will be 42 feet in width, and it will run underneath an existing utility power lines that cross the property from east to west. It might be a bit hard to see up here on the screen, but we do have the power lines right here depicted in kind of dash lines. And though, and again, this public road will run underneath those existing power lines. So as you can see, that new public road does end with cul-de-sacs on each terminus. Over here on the eastern terminus, we do have over here kind of this smaller road over here. That is a 25-foot-wide easement with a six-foot-wide pedestrian path, and that is going to be dedicated and to serve as an emergency vehicle access road. And then this will, again, partially connect over here to one of the other existing streets I'm not showing over here. That is Peerless Avenue. And then going over here to Excelsior Avenue, that Excelsior will be extended as a new 38-foot-wide cul-de-sac road, and it will again intersect over here, this new existing public road. So we do have Excelsior Avenue over here as not shown. That is going to be extended over here and is going to be serving these parcels as shown. With the extension of Excelsior Avenue and the new public road, they're going to be constructed to meet Class D public street improvements. There's also an 18-foot public, public utility, public facility easement, and it's a puffy, and that's going to be required to be dedicated adjacent to all of the new public streets. So Class D street improvements includes the installation of roadways, bike lanes, drainage facilities, as well as pedestrian walkways within the right-of-way and the puffy easements. Additionally, streetlights are required at all intersections and as well as the cul-de-sacs for safety purposes. Located over here on the southern part of the subdivision map, we do have a 50-foot-wide equestrian easement that's going to be dedicated along the southern property lines. This easement will eventually be developed into an equestrian trail that will connect to an existing network of equestrian trails managed by the Orangevale Recreation and Park District. Just to note, the Park District will oversee the construction and maintenance of the trail. It was also suggested that the trail be multi-use, and the Park District has indicated support for this. Moving on to the preliminary grading plan. So with the street improvements being installed, as well as the future development of the lots, the project would result in substantial grading specifically for the home pads, driveways, drainage improvements, as well as the extension of Excelsior Avenue and the construction of the new 42-foot-wide public road. As mentioned in the previous slide, while building pads and building envelopes are being shown on the project exhibits, the lots are expected to be developed after the property is subdivided. As a result, the project has been conditioned to ensure that future development of each lot is reviewed by the Design Review Administrator for grading and drainage conditions, as well as final design. So the Orangevale CPAC met on November 7th, 2023, to hear and consider the project. The CPAC voted five yes, zero no, one absent, to recommend that the Planning Commission approve the requested entitlements with the recommendation of Class C improvements, streetlight to be looked at further for minimal impact, a stub ending instead of a cul-de-sac for that new public road, as well as a look at more in-depth for speed control on Excelsior Avenue. The project was also reviewed by the DRAC on September 14th, 2023, and it recommends that the Planning Commission find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, provided with the recommendation that each individual lot be reviewed by the Design Review Administrator for grading and drainage conditions, as well as final design. So the project, the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, community plan, and zoning code as conditioned. The project is compatible with the surrounding zoning and land uses. There are no significant environmental concerns. The project was supported by both the Orangevale CPAC and the DRAC. We also do have some key conditions that I want to point out in regards to the project. So Condition 8 is regarding the future design review of the lot development by the Design Review Administrator, and then Conditions 71 and 72 pertain to the requirement of each parcel being connected to public water and having their own septic system. Planning and environmental review staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the following: determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete; adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program; approve the tentative subdivision map, subject to findings and conditions; approve the special development permit, subject to findings and conditions; and lastly, find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, subject to findings and conditions. This concludes the end of my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. We also do have the applicant team in attendance as well, and they're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll kick us off with questions this evening. Can you talk a little bit about the CPACs? I understand, I think I understood the staff report on speed, and I'm not overly concerned with the lighting, as we kind of addressed that already, but just in the Class C versus D street and then the stub versus cul-de-sac, I didn't really understand those requests based on the staff report.
Yeah, so with, kind of what occurred at the CPAC is the neighbors were preferring the Class C improvements, and then with the stub end, it was my understanding that the neighbors kind of hoped and anticipated that there would be some sort of future connection over to Hazel Avenue, so they kind of wanted that stub ending instead of having the cul-de-sacs, fearing that the cul-de-sacs would be essentially just become like a place to just park extra cars or people to come do stuff, basically loiter. So there was that kind of concern that was brought forward at the CPAC. But after discussing with our site and site improvement and permit section, they had mentioned that they would retain the Class D and the cul-de-sacs at this time. So that's kind of what occurred at the CPAC and how we followed through.
And the Class C was really hoping that connection through to Hazel also, because the Class C really is just a wider street, right?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the anticipation that the people had wanted originally, instead of the cul-de-sac with the Class D.
Understood. Thank you. Other questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Borja.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate the information, Mr. Huerta. I was wondering, you know, SAC sewer and regional sand already provides service up until the northern portion of Orangevale. Why still the decision to maintain this into septic systems that would require upgrades later on?
So it was my understa, so when we distributed the project, I believe the nearest sewer lateral was a couple hundreds of feet away from the project site, so they were not request, they were not requiring essentially connection at this time. One thing also to note is that the parcel size, they're all over two acres in size. They would, essentially, if it's over two acres, they would be allowed to do a septic system on their property.
Have we had a chance to speak with SAC sewer or regional sand to see if this could be a potential synergistic project? I only ask because they're, they're getting septic-to-sewer conversion grants anyways from the state that could potentially assist with this type of project?
So when we distributed the project over for conditions, we did not receive any requests in order to have the applicants connect the sewer at this time. I understand that there's been kind of like a push, I think, towards getting sites connected on public sewer, but with this project, we didn't see anything come through in terms of connecting.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Conklin?
Yeah, thank you. I had a quick question just regarding the equestrian trail. There's been, I believe in the analysis, some concerns were surfaced regarding kind of the multi-use of this trail, and I wonder if you might be able to kind of illuminate some of those concerns or share, provide a little additional insight?
Yeah, so originally, the concern or the idea of bringing it, or bringing the equestrian trail to being multimodal came from the fact that the neighbors had wanted to potentially use the, the actual trail as like, you know, for walking or for biking as well, not just horses. I know that the Park District has kind of like a master plan, that kind of their vision is to basically connect all these trails together to like a larger system within the area. I think their vision is to eventually connect over to the Parkway down at the American River. But with this, going back to the multimodal, that really stemmed more so from the community aspect and having it being used for not just horses, but for walking, biking, et cetera. And we reached out to the Park District, and then essentially they had mentioned they had no concerns with being multimodal, as well as with the applicant. They, they had no concerns or questions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff this evening? Okay, thank you, Mr. Huerta.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up. And we'll get you guys sworn in to start.
Hello there. So if you would please raise your right hand, which you already are, and the appropriate response is I do, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give to the commission is the truth to help you, God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
Yes.
Okay, if you could state your names for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
Okay.
Javet Siddiki, 1808 J Street, Sacramento, California. I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Vlad Okel, 8428 Oak Flatway, Illinois, California, 95843. I've been sworn.
We read the staff report. We've been working with staff, and we appreciate all the good works. We are agreeable to all the conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiki. Any questions for the applicant this evening?
Thank you.
Commissioner Devlin?
If you could maybe talk about the, the logic and reasoning behind such a low-density 12, two units, 25 acres, RD2.
The, the density is two acres lots. We have 25 acres, so we have 12 lots. Each lot is bigger than two acres that's required.
Yeah, I, thank you. But why not an RD7 or an RD5? Why not build something more dense? Why not build more homes?
I think we want it to be consistent with the zoning, and being a resident of Orangevale, I know the residents are pretty particular about density, especially north of Oak. They want two-acre minimum, and we want it to be consistent.
Okay. And, and the sewer connection that my colleague brought up, why was that not possible?
The sewer is more than 300 feet away. Health department is okay, but we can extend the sewer if we are required to. It's just going to be more off-site construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant this evening? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment this evening?
There are no public comments.
All right. We'll move on to deliberation. I'll kick us off this evening. I appreciate, you know, the Orangevale Community Plan does call for two acres minimum lots on the north side. I very much appreciate keeping consistent with the AR2 zoning that's there. Also, I just want to encourage, you know, in the Sequel Report, looking at the impacts, tree number 15 was, had a raptor's nest and is a heritage oak, and I'd just like to call that out, you know, whatever we can do to preserve that tree. I know there was some ideas put forth in the, in the Sequel analysis. As the site is, as the individual homes are designed, I would appreciate attention being paid particularly to that tree so we can hopefully preserve it with the plan. I think it's possible, so no questions at this time. I know it's, it's still in design, but just want to publicly highlight that, so you guys keep it in mind as you move forward with the project. And with that, I'll move staff recommendation. Any other comments or questions? All right, please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Corona Savagnano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you. And Raythal.
Yes.
And the motion carries unanimously. Vote.
Thank you. Please call item number three.
And your item number three this evening is PLMP 2019-00209. It's for a use permit and minor use permit, special development permit and design review. It's located at the southwest, southwest corner of Roosevelt Avenue and 47th Street intersection in the South Sacramento community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration. Can we lower it a little? Are you good? You're good?
I, I think we're good.
Okay.
I feel kind of tall right now, so I think this is going to work. Thank you, Planning Commissioners. This project is PLMP 2019-00209. This is the Nueva Vista Congregate Care Facility, and I am Leanne Mueller, the planner for this project. So this project is located near the southwest corner of Roosevelt Avenue and 47th Street in the South Sacramento community. It currently consists of seven sites that will be merged prior to development. This site is developed with some existing uses that the applicant is proposing to reutilize. So of note, there is an existing congregate care facility that is located on this parcel here, and then on this parcel here, this parcel here, and this parcel here, there are existing residences that will be remained but will be refurbished. So, and we would note that this area is in this county, but the area itself is a mix of county and city of Sacramento. So the subject parcels actually have three zonings. So there's an RD5, RD15, and an RD20. And again, to note that the existing congregate care facility is located here on the RD15 zone parcel. To the north, you have Sacramento County parcels that have an RD20 zoning but are developed with single-family residences. To the south and west, the properties are in the city of Sacramento. To the south, they mostly consist of the single-family residences, but to the west, it is more of a community center-type use. And then to the east, that is county, and that has the RD5 or single-family residential zoning. So to note that on August 8th of 1996, the zoning administrator did grant a use permit to allow an expansion of an existing congregate, residential care home to a congregate care facility for a maximum of 49 residences on approximately 1.14 acres in that RD15 zoning district. We would note that this use permit is active for that parcel, which I've pointed out. It's 4604 Roosevelt Avenue. The site does have three other existing buildings, and they will also be proposed for the reuse. So staff did review recent code enforcement, and there are no active code enforcement violations on this site. The other parcels that are associated with this are also vacant. So this is a use permit to allow the expansion of that existing congregate care facility in, that has, that was permitted for 49 beds to approximately 140 beds on 3.35 acres in that RD5, RD15, and RD20 zoning district. So it is also a special development, and it is proposing to deviate from some of the development standards in the county. One thing to note is that there are two buildings, Building 9 and 10, where they are proposing to reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet. There is a portion where they aren't proposing screen trees along an interior property line with, that abuts other residential uses, and then they're proposing to reduce some of the landscaping in the parking lot. One of the other things to note is that along the Roosevelt Avenue frontage, where it is adjacent to the existing congregate care outdoor area, it's approximately 42 feet. They're asking for a concrete mason or wall in that location rather than the open ornamental fence to provide some additional buffering from that outdoor area for the residents and the existing street. The other thing to note is that this is in design review. So through our design review in our zoning code, you can ask for a reduction in vehicle parking spaces. So they are asking to do that, and they're asking to reduce their parking spaces from 56 to 48, and it is also the design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. So the environmental document that was prepared for this project was a mitigated negative declaration. It was released for its public review on June 21st of 2024. The environmental analysis discussed impacts to transportation and traffic, air quality, hydrology and water quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hydrology and water quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and greenhouse gas emissions. We would note that the project would result in a less insignificant impact with the implementation of those mitigation measures, and most of the mitigation measures are going to be for like biological resources, cultural resources, and some best management practices while constructing. We did receive two public comments on the environmental document, but they were more related to the use than the actual environmental impacts. One person did request that the site be fully landscaped, and the other was from the Oak Park, South Oak Park Community Association, and they were generally opposed to this use on the site. So this is the site plan for the proposed use. Again, the existing congregate care facility is located right here. Then you will see that there are two existing residences which are located here and here, and there's also a third residence which is located down here. Some additional uses that you will be seeing are the Buildings 9 and 10, which are the male and female dormitories, which will each house approximately 33 residences. And then you are going to see that they are proposing a counseling clinic here, and then they're proposing a mix of maintenance buildings, community buildings, and the like. The last thing to note is that down here, there will be some smaller clinics and then some cottages for residences as well. This is the phasing plan that is associated with the project. In the first phase, the applicant is proposing to build the clinic building, the, the buildings here, which are the maintenance building and then the community building, they are proposing to install the parking and driveway. And then in Phase 2, you will see where they're going to be putting in these buildings, which are the dormitories. And then in the last phase, you would see the cottages and the additional clinics. This is the landscaping plan for the site. The site does have fairly robust landscaping associated with it. The area which they were talking about not having the, the screening trees is located approximately here where it is adjacent to these residences. We wanted to include this one so that you could see the building design of the buildings they're proposing. Generally, they're a mix of wood and stucco, and all the buildings on the site will be single-story buildings. So this project did go to the South Sacramento CPAC in May of 2021. They did get six written comments and four verbal comments on this, which actually is quite a few comments and public participation for that community. They received one comment in favor, the rest were in opposition. The neighbor concerns generally had to do with the over-concentration of this type of use in the community. They were then concerned that the project would detract from the uplifting or the efforts to revitalize or have potential within this community, and then they were concerned that it would decrease property values and that the neighbors generally were concerned about feeling unsafe in the presence of the facility. So ultimately, after much public deliberation and comments, the CPAC did vote to recommend denial of this project to the Planning Commission. They further voted to authorize an appeal of the item to the Board of Supervisors if the Planning Commission were to approve this item. So this project also went to the DRAC in 2021, and the DRAC ultimately did vote to find that the project was in substantial, to recommend that the project was in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. They did make a couple of recommendations. One, that, that project have less parking, so there could be more landscaping in the parking lot, and then they were wanting to potentially see more screening at the edges where it is adjacent to single-family residential. Ultimately, the applicant chose to move forward with their project as designed. So this project to note is the existent, is the expansion of the existing congregate care facility through the adaptation of existing buildings and the addition of new buildings on approximately 3.35 acres. As we've said, there are the four structures that are on the project site. There are the two single-family residential, those are 4612 and 4616. Those are going to be, continue to have beds, and they will be used for, for those who are maybe transitioning to kind of a semi-independent living on the site. There's the 4604 Roosevelt, which is the existing congregate care facility, and then on the westernmost portion, there is an existing residence which is proposed to be used as kind of like an onsite manager and then staff housing should they need to spend the night there. So it is also going to propose 11 new structures, and in your staff report, you will see a table where we went through and summarized what those structures are going to be used for, and then if there is a resident count that would be associated with those. In our analysis, we have determined that this project is consistent with the general plan and the community plan, and with the approval of the special development permit, it will be consistent with the zoning code use and development standards. And then the proposed development is consistent with the surrounding uses as conditioned. So therefore, Planning and Environmental Review Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to Sequel is adequate and complete, that you adopt the mitigated monitoring and reporting program, which is Attachment 11, and that you approve the use permit and minor use permit subject to the findings and conditions in Attachment 2, and that you also approve the special development permit subject to findings and conditions, and then that you find the project is in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. As a last note, I would note that the applicant is here, and today we did actually receive numerous public comments on this project, but they seemed to be in favor of this project. And I will answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Mueller. Questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Conklin?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the staff report. So I'm, spoke with the applicant last week, and we went over the proposed landscaping, and I'm still struggling to try to reconcile what the landscape concept, planning plan is printed here, which shows a very robust landscaping proposal that has screening trees.
Correct.
And in the proposal, there's for, I guess to be, the applicant is seeking not to plant landscaping or screening trees around the trash receptacle, and, and so the, I guess I'm, when, when we spoke on the phone, though, they said that that reflected a previous iteration, unless I misheard. And so I'm just trying to reconcile between the concept plan that has trees, the site plan that doesn't have trees, and then the application that says there's no trees.
It's looking, so typically for trash enclosures, they're required to be screened on three sides. I think the issue was that it just may not have been screened on all of those three sides.
It's the northeast corner.
Yes. The northeast corner doesn't look like it has screening, so that would be where it potentially may be falling slightly short of our requirements, and, and I would say that is not atypical of projects that you see before you for them not to have the screening on all three sides. If that answers that question, I believe.
It does. And then if we go to the, I think it's an 85-foot section? So in my landscape concept planting plan, there's trees. So is that just an inaccurate?
I think that it's just that they're not like the more dense screening trees that you're seeing along the other portions of the site. There, there's definitely landscaping there, and there's trees. It's just that they're not the dense screening trees. They have more of an offset associated with them.
I think.
Is my understanding of it.
If you pull up the plan real quick, I kind of looked at this because I had the same questions, and I dug in on the, if you look at that parcel that's left in the center there, on the left side of that.
Right here.
Yep. That's the 85 feet.
Right.
That's not screened because of a water line.
This is just all trees.
So my understanding is that there is landscaping, it's just that it's spaced, it's not that denser screening.
Yeah, we're looking at two different landscape plans, because that one there, maybe, was that the CPAC? One? No, I was wondering if this was the CP, because there's two in there.
So this is the inaccurate one? That was a question, yes?
Yeah, I think, because that, that one up there is the most recent one, I think.
Right.
So this packet disregard?
Oh, this one that we have today?
Okay.
Commissioner Conklin, that came from the applicant, Mr. Holloway.
Okay. Now, I guess now I'm more.
We'll clarify that. We'll clarify that with the applicant when they come up.
Because, yes, because I don't, because what I have is in my pocket, and my understanding is that there is landscaping, there are trees, they're just, and it's just not, it's just normal spacing. It's not the denser spacing.
When I surfaced that with the applicant over the call, they said that the absence of that screening was an earlier iteration that they were addressing that. So I just wanted to try to true that up.
Absolutely.
And we can get that clarified with them, and if we need to modify that, we can certainly do so.
Other questions for staff this evening?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your present, thank you for your presentation. Can you just kind of quickly run through the previous kind of community presentations and votes on this? I think I got everything correctly, but you kind of went through some that.
Okay. So this project did go to the South Sacramento CPAC as a recommending body to the Planning Commission. There was opposition to this project at the CPAC, and ultimately, the CPAC did vote to recommend denial of that project. So that is the CPAC recommendation that you're seeing before you. And they also preauthorized a potential appeal to the Board of Supervisors if the Planning Commission recommended approval.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Corona Sabaniano?
Can you speak, or did we receive any comments from the city of Sacramento on this project?
We did not receive any from the city of Sacramento, no.
Okay. But there was outreach to the city?
Yeah. We would have provided notification to the city as part of our standard notification process.
Okay. And then I think you mentioned that at the CPAC, there was a concern that there's an over-concentration of these uses in the area. Is that true?
So.
Or do we have that information?
We do. In your staff report, we did try and go through and look for similar uses. So we did indicate that. Let me find that discussion for you. Yes, thank you. So we did indicate that on page 16 under the community response. So basically, we went and we searched the Department of Social Services website for various categories of adult services in the ZIP code, and so we found residential homes for adults. And basically, there were about seven licensed facilities in this area. We recognized that in our search, it may not be extensive, but that is what we were able to find in doing the search for that. And the other thing to keep in mind is that for this type of facility, staff doesn't have a separation or a density requirement. I think you'll see that some uses, you can't like have, like for example, sometimes thrift stores, right? You can't have, like, they have to be 1,000 feet from each other. We don't have a requirement like that in the county.
Okay. Thank you. And then so how does that, and if you don't have this, it's okay. How does that compare, seven facilities in the area compared to other areas in a county?
I did a quick search, but I didn't feel like I could make a, a apple-to-apples comparison to be able to present to the Planning Commission, which is why it's not in here.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff this evening? All right. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant, and applicant team up. We can get you all sworn in at once. The whole team doesn't have to come up. If you're going to answer questions, you can just stand up and raise your right hand where you're at, and the clerk will get you sworn in. Just if you're going to be answering any questions or potentially answering any questions.
Do you want to swear me in or?
Yes, we're waiting. I think your team is deciding whether or not they.
Anybody who's going to speak needs to be sworn in.
And if you could please raise your right hand and appropriate your responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony that you're about to give the commission is the truth so help you God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. When you go to the podium, if you could please state your names for the record and make this statement, I have been sworn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Raythel, members of the commission, Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, 2102 First Street, Sacramento, and I've been sworn. Representing Synergy Congregate Care. With me tonight is Michael Weinstein, who is the owner, operator, and the applicant of, of the project. Linda Kaufman is the Vice President of Development and Resident Relations, and Ken Brogno is the project architect. First thing I'd like to do is thank LeAnn for a very thorough staff report and for getting us promptly through this planning process. We really appreciate her hard work and diligence. You have on your desk a, a handout from me that pretty much will follow along the presentation that I'm going to give to you, and also a packet of letters of support and emails of support that we've received and I believe have been forwarded on to the, the board clerk. And the, there's also a summary sheet on the first, the first page that kind of talks about the specifics of the project and importantly, the benefits of this particular project. Nueva Vista, as LeAnn mentioned, is an existing congregate care facility serving elderly adults who are basically not able to take care of themselves any longer. They may have mental health issues, they may have incontinence issues, and they may be, in order to survive, they have to take their medicines, and they don't take their medicine unless they're living in a facility like this. So if they, we didn't have facilities like this, these, these individuals would be either on the street, or they would be significantly failing to maintain their physical well-being. The project before you tonight is an expansion of an existing facility which will allow them to take care of 140 residents as opposed to the 53 that they, they currently have. And we're going to do an old-school presentation because the electronic idea didn't work. So, so this is a photo of the main entrance, and, and you can see that there's a larger building behind it. That is the larger dormitory where common areas, sleeping areas, and gathering spaces are, are included. This is an aerial photo of the site, and you can see that this is the congregate care main building. These are the new residences, and this is the, the new office building. Also, you'll notice that the lots around it are either vacant or they're large, or they're deep set, and most of the residences, the homes, are pushed closer to the street than to our facility. Also, I wanted to superimpose the project over the aerial, and you can see that it, it fits in nicely, especially with the large. in nicely, especially with the large vacant properties around it. Another picture of the, the main entrance. You heard about the two residential homes that have converted to residential sites for the residents and they graduate to, from the dormitory to these individual buildings where they have sort of their own living space. They kind of graduate to that. One of the, and one of the, a nice things about it is that they also have some private outdoor space that comes at the, at the back of the, of the homes. This is some pictures of the living space. This would be a residential room and some common area that they have and additional gathering spaces inside the building. And then this is sort of a summary of Synergy's treatment model where they do individual treatment, group treatment, all kinds of mental health care for them. And then this is the site plan and the landscaping plan, which I think is a more current version that's the one in your packet, I believe. Correct?
In looking at it, it does look slightly different than our packet. So if we neglected to include the most recent one, I definitely apologize on that.
We've got a mix, it looks like, in our package. Just concerning from what I can tell, those, the trees are along the parcel ending in 012.
Yeah, it looks like they have, that, the version that Mr. Holloway has does have additional trees located along that center parcel that you've called out, which there was just landscaping in the version in the packet.
See, this one seemed to have more trees than the earlier version, so.
Got it.
I would think this would be the more current version because this one went through the DrAC.
In the special development permit reasons, it says there was a water line that was preventing tree planting along that 85 square feet. So did that water line disappear? How do, how do we suddenly have trees there when we?
I'm not sure.
I know this project has a 2019 date on it, so I get it that it's probably been in process for a while, but.
Yeah, I would think that the water line would be in the street and not on the, on the Engleville property. One thing I did want to mention is that I've represented a number of community care facilities over the years and this one is unique in that this particular facility, they actually have a program where the residents of the facility actually go out and volunteer into the community and help other social service providers. And this is a list of the volunteer programs that they've had for 2023 and to date 2024. There was some discussion about over-concentration and, let's see if I have that, I'll address that for just a second. This is a map of the 95820 ZIP code and that's the blue line is the ZIP code. And I projected in here in yellow, the South Oak Park Neighborhood Association. So it's smaller than the, than the ZIP code. But in that particular ZIP code, in the entire ZIP code area, there are only eight care facilities similar to this particular project. And you can see that over here, the number of, the capacity or the number of residents that actually live in these facilities, while there may be eight, you can see that for the most part, it's a very small type of facility. Typically, these are single-family homes that are caring for folks and only really two of them, Nueva Vista and the Praise Care Home, have actually more than 10 residents. One thing I'd also like to mention is that, one thing that it's important to note is that there may be eight care facilities here. There are 10,221 care facilities like this in the county. So there's only eight in this entire ZIP code, not exactly over-concentrated. And one thing I would like to mention is that these kinds of facilities have been closing, unfortunately. And you can see that in the county, 123 have closed since 2019, the loss of 841 beds. And in this particular ZIP code, there are seven facilities that have closed and so only eight remaining and so a loss of 41 beds. So I hope this kind of addresses the not over-concentration question. And Mr. Weinstein and Ms. Kaufman and I are here to take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. Questions for the applicant teams evening? Commissioner Borja?
Thank you, Mr. Holloway, and I appreciate you and your team's availability last week and briefing me about this project as well. I'd like to maybe get your thoughts on a couple of the points that were brought up by the Oak Park Neighborhood Association about, not necessarily allegations, but their feedback that many of the residents that will be served by this, this property would not be coming from our local neighborhoods. Is there any truth to that at all? They made a statement that this would mostly be Bay Area patients that are going to be being served.
Let me ask Ms. Kaufman if she can address that. She'd be more familiar with that question. Can you come on up to the mic?
Thank you.
Come on up to the microphone.
Thank you. Did I affirm? Okay.
Yes, you could state your name for the record.
Linda Kaufman, Synergy Programs. So I did see that comment on there also. It wasn't until about three years ago that the Board of Supervisors allocated funds for this type of housing, MHSA Fund, Mental Health Services Act. So that was one piece. So we didn't have an opportunity to contract with Sacramento County Behavioral Health with Dr. Quist and Heidi Allen, who's our contract manager. We absolutely prioritize Sacramento County clients, just hands down. Some come from different counties, Yolo County, Placer County, El Dorado. So I hope that answers your question, but absolutely Sacramento is a priority.
All right, understood. Thank you so much. And that's, you mentioned Dr. Ryan Quist. He's the Behavioral Health Director of Sacramento County.
That is correct, yeah, yeah.
Right, thank you. And then just a follow-up question. They had comments about safety and security. What is the current ratio of staffing that you have now or your proposed ratio of staffing for the members that will be there during the 24/7 stay?
So one of the things I wanted to clarify, it's, it's not the Oak Park Association that made the comments, it's the South Oak Park. I think there's a division between the two, so I just wanted to make that clear. So right now, we have 22 staff in the residence for 49 clients and then some individuals living in those houses. And then we also have clinical staff, I think there's 12. I don't know exactly how many. We have a portable unit. So we have Dr. Finko, clinical LMFTs, MHRSs, in addition to that residential staff.
It's about 35 right now.
Yeah.
And some of those, some of those staff are staying in, inside and are available 24/7. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And so the, the house that's next door is a duplex that we purchased and our facilities manager is there. I stay on campus when I travel in this area, so it's open for staffing, visitors, whatever that looks like.
Thank you. And just one last question and kind of like your line of work or prior experience, if there is ever an opportunity or an instance where you've had to call either 911 or the police or the Sheriff's Department in this case, what is the typical kind of reaction time and what's the typical protocol that you do in order to preserve the safety of not just the rest of your residents, but the rest of the neighborhood?
I would say that the most common call is somebody trips and falls and you have to, by law, have somebody come out. The response, that's a fire department call. As far as dangerous activities, the response time has been quick, but typically, we don't, we try and call an ambulance. Maybe someone's psychotic, not feeling self-safe, suicidal. We'll call the ambulance and have them go directly to the hospital without that intervention. So we're always trying to get there first and that's the benefit of having our clinical staff available is seeing those red flags before they happen. If that makes sense.
Understood, thank you. And then I imagine that many of your residents will not be driving in and out of your residence.
Absolutely not.
And so the.
Your residents have no cars.
They have no cars. They don't have driver's licenses. And even if they did, we wouldn't allow them to drive as one of our clients.
Understood, so.
That's why the parking reductions, you don't have any residents driving.
Understood, so maybe, yeah, that's kind of my question. So we may not be expecting as many visitors, therefore overflow parking and/or street parking may not be impacted and there should be more than enough adequate spaces.
Correct.
For that ratio.
Yeah, there were no calls for service from the sheriff.
There were no calls? Okay, understood.
I would say most of them are medical. You know, maybe somebody's blood sugar went up really high or, or something like that. If somebody falls and hits their head and they can't get up on their own, you are required to call for an ambulance and fire department.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Devlin, any questions for the applicant team?
Yes, thank you. Can you describe your care model? Just what's typical kind of day for someone living at the facility?
So, so we follow, and it was a little bit illustrated here. So our model is called a modified therapeutic community model, which is an evidence-based practice. So besides the housing, medication management, support, you also have those clinical services. So a typical born care is not going to have a psychiatrist on staff or therapist. So they get up in the morning, we feed the meals, we do medication. Any medical issues, we have two, two full-time program managers that are constantly keeping our clients engaged. I think one of the examples of that you saw is when our clients go out and help in the community and volunteer. So some of it is artwork, some of it is learning about their symptoms, lots of different groups going on, clinical and residential, physical, social. I wish I had a calendar, sorry. And I can email you a calendar of what a group day looks like. We serve the meals, three meals, two snacks, medication management. From 8:00 until 6:00 the next morning, we're doing two-hour checks primarily to see that our clients are there, they're safe, they haven't fallen. We don't have to do that, that's not a requirement by CCL, but it's something that we do.
And again, how many staff overnight do you have on, on site?
So two staff overnight. Sorry, that's my operations person. Two staff overnight. For the most part, our clients are sleeping.
Okay. That's it for now.
Commissioner Conklin, questions for the applicant team? Commissioner Corona Sabanino, any questions for the applicant team?
I'm sorry, I think I missed it. You talked about the patient to staff ratio that you currently have, but what's the proposed one with the expansion to 140?
I apologize, I don't have that exact number. These are my staffing people. Do you know? I'll stop your head.
It's about a one to three ratio.
One to three ratio.
And do you have a waiting list?
It's a revolving waiting list. We call it a referral list. So part of, part of that modified therapeutic community is we receive a referral, maybe someone's at Crestwood or State Hospital Heritage Oaks and we start meeting with them. If they don't meet our criteria, then we continue working with them, even though they can't be admitted yet. So just as an example, 60 days no assault of behavior, 60 days no property damage, 30 days no substance use. Our clients, because of where they're coming from, they're stable. They're coming from an MHRC, which would be like a Crestwood level of care. Their medications are dialed in. We do have dual diagnosis clients. They are institutionally sober when they come to us. We want to keep them that way. We have a very robust program for our clients that have secondary addiction issues.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And no questions for me, so thank you. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
And we'll move to public comment.
And there's no public comments.
All right. We'll move on to deliberation. Who wants to kick us off this evening?
Chair, just have, actually just one follow-up question for the staff. You know, since the CPAC had preempted a request for an appeal, sorry, we haven't had many, very many of those in the last couple of years. Do you mind just kind of explaining how that would be and what, what would that entail kind of in the process moving forward? Should the decision-making body make a move tonight?
Sure. Good question, Commissioner Borja. The short answer is it's a relatively straightforward process. If the Planning Commission were to approve the project tonight, the CPAC has pre-authorized an appeal. They would then file that paperwork with the clerk of the board's office, presumably in opposition to an approval. The project would then be heard by the Board of Supervisors or the appeal would be heard by the Board of Supervisors and they would be the final hearing body, either upholding the appeal or upholding the Planning Commission's approval.
Understood. And then would, would it be incumbent to the applicant then to provide all of these other letters of support? Because I did notice that there's a, you know, Mental Health Commission members here that support it and there are some other members or is the entire packet just go, move forward to the Board of Supervisors?
Also a good question. The appeal hearing and counsel can feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. I think there, we do do virtually the same staff report and then outlining the reasons for the appeal that we get from the appellant. The board is hearing the project anew, so any of the comments that have come in are transferred up to the hearing body, the higher hearing body, the board. I would expect the, both the appellant and the applicant to provide letters either, in support of either points of view, I guess is the right way to say that.
Understood, thank you.
I need to have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. On the, the use permit, assuming that this body did approve this, you know, I guess, let me rewind. I think facilities and facilities like this and similar to this, it really comes down to how it operates within any community. What are the mechanisms, if any, of any violations of this use permit or this becomes, this type of use becomes incompatible, you know, I think largely through its operations? Is there a mechanism which like, no, like you're not applying, abide by like our agreement to continue to operate this?
So you will see that there are several conditions of approval that staff has provided in this pocket. If for some reason it became clear that the facility was not being operated pursuant to that, we would work with the applicant to correct that, operate pursuant to their conditions of approval. And ultimately, as kind of the last resort, if they did not comply with their conditions of approval, operate pursuant to their conditions of approval and we were having chronic issues, we could come before a hearing body to revoke that use permit.
Thank you.
Any other?
Mr. Chairman, I omitted saying that we've read the staff report and the conditions of approval and the findings and agree with those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. I'll throw a quick comment out there. As you guys know, I'm not a fan of special development permits and exceptions and I do want to say that I appreciate the use of the special development permit in a very limited fashion and it's not a carte blanche across the site. So I kind of looked into the justification behind each of those and although there does seem to be a little confusion around the 85 feet of, of trees, the perimeter of the site is obviously much, much larger than that. So I understand the idea behind the masonry wall and appreciate the fact that it was kept to the bare minimum of what you need to operate the facility instead of expanding it across the boundary. So I also appreciate the preservation of the oaks that are on site. I think that's great for the residents. I think it's great for the neighborhood and great for the region when the buildings are sited in order to preserve those trees and that natural environment. So really, I just want to take a moment and say I didn't meet with the applicant team. So really, I just want to take a moment and say I did meet with the applicant team, went through these issues, and then after researching a little further with the staff report, just want to commend you on, on making those limited exceptions for the special development permit. Does anyone want to make a motion this evening?
So I think before there's a motion, I think I would just like to at least acknowledge that I think we're dealing with a couple of issues here, not the least of which is the remnants of some very long ago annexations that were maybe arguably more incomplete than they could have been. We are dealing with, like, quite literally what is referred to as, like, this is the tip of the finger within the county. And I think it has historically caused what some people have felt has been some disenfranchisement over the years, is that those land use decisions have, I think, have felt disconnected, I think, from the people that think that they live in the city, because they don't really know any boundary. This is a highly densely, densely urban populated neighborhood, South Oak Park, and it is immediately north of another lovely neighborhood known as Lawrence Park. And so I think we should at least appreciate some of the sensitivity around, around some of the, the land use. We're also dealing with what is a need that we clearly have within our community and within our communities, to service a population that is maybe better served in facilities like this, certainly than on the street, certainly in that they may receive attempting to live by themselves. And so I think facilities like this do provide a tremendous community service. And as to where they go, I personally hope that they would be welcomed and go into every neighborhood. And so as we look across the city and these others do come up, I'm going to be supporting the project tonight, because I do think we have a good operator here. If the applicant is willing, I would like them to add to their list of conditions that they maintain a point of contact with a live person, that they, for the Lawrence Neighborhood Association, as well as the South Oak Park Neighborhood Association, that they maintain a point of contact with those neighborhood associations, that they can call and contact should there be any issues. Yeah. And I'll just kind of, I guess, leave it at that.
Is that an official motion?
Well, if my colleagues are, I will make a motion to approve the staff recommendation with the addition of the maintain point of contact specifically, meaning that there be a human person's number available to the, to the neighborhood association, maybe board, not just to like a 24-hour 800 number, but with that to per the staff recommendation. And maybe we can come back at a later time and revisit the rest of the annexation issues that maybe need to transpire to continue to, you know, put this portion within the, maybe arguably, control of the city, since it is really in the city, it is serviced by the city police department, it is really serviced by the city fire department. It is for all intents and purposes, other than technically being in the county, it is in the city of Sacramento.
Come on up to the microphone. That was going to be my next request, is that you made a comment or weighed in on...
So to, to your point, it's an important one. And in 2018, when the CPAC advisors came and took a tour of the property, they asked for a sign with a phone number, with someone on the other side of that phone number to be available. And so we did that, and that's in the front. Shannon Thompson is our community outreach program manager, so she is the one who liaises with everybody. We have a, and also, this is part of Sacramento County Behavioral Health. This is part of our contract with them also. So every door that we have has to have our hours of operation and a contact phone number, cell phone number. Sath is our administrator. Everybody has his contact information. We have a good neighbor policy already, and I'll send those to you so you see what those look like. And everybody has my cell phone number.
Thank you.
So we're definitely doing that right now. And also, all county contracts are different, but just so you know, Sacramento County Behavioral Health is the only one that has just a really good process in place for that communication also. A lot of counties don't do that, but Sacramento does.
Does that change your motion?
No. They can still maintain the, sounds like they're already doing it. Great.
Yep. So the motion, just clarify, your motion is for staff recommendation, or is there still an addition of a condition?
Oh, it still has the addition of the maintaining a point of contact with a live person for the Lawrence Neighborhood, Lawrence Park Neighborhood Association and the Southland Park Neighborhood Association.
I'd also just offer, if you're going to get a second on that or a different version of that motion, maybe you want to clear up the landscape plan issue. I don't know if we ever figured out which was the right one, or if either one is implementable, but you might want to be clear on that when you get to a, to a second on a motion.
I guess my motion was under the assumption that the applicant had provided us with the most complete landscaping plan.
That was my understanding as well.
So real quick on that issue, from staff's perspective, since we obviously have not seen that document, and it's not in the staff report package, our preference would be to maintain the special development permit language that includes it, because that provides greater flexibility recognizing, Commissioner Rathel, your comments about the limited applicability of the special development permit. Rather than deleting it from the special development permit, it's our preference as staff to keep it in there, such that if there's any potential hiccups when we get into the detailed engineering, or the applicant does, that they don't have to return.
Yeah. Both landscape plans look like they're in the current packet, but there's only one exception in the special development permit, and that's 85 feet. And it says utility conflicts with water. That's, that's the way I read it, but I, as far as the landscape plan, there are both that are in the packet, one with trees and one without. So Commissioner Kaufman, that's why I was like, wait, mine doesn't have trees. And you're like, mine does have trees. I'm like, oh, they're both in here.
My assumption was there was the one with trees.
So we'll just ask for some clarification, with trees or without trees?
If we can include the trees without conflicting with some physical item underground or on the ground, we'll definitely do that. And the other option is just an updated, corrected plan to the Board of Supervisors before that hearing.
Got it. So we're voting on it with trees. We're going to leave the special development permit with a possibility of 85-foot exception, and it's going to the board either way.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. And as far as the addition of a condition, would the applicant be amenable to a condition that the, both of the neighborhood associations are provided the contact information of the on-call person? Sounds like it's posted outside the door anyway, so would the applicant be amenable to that?
We'd appreciate a condition like that, so yes.
Okay. I'll look to staff to draft said condition.
I'll second that motion by the commissioner to my right. He's blanking out, I'm sorry. I'm a nine-week-old at home, I'm not sleeping. Commissioner Devlin.
We'll accept your second, Commissioner, to my left. Let's wait on some draft language here from staff to make sure it's amenable to all.
Just to clarify the language, Commissioner Devlin, what you're suggesting is a condition that the operator maintain a phone number that's publicly available, that would reach to a person as a point of contact for the Lawrence Park Neighborhood Association and the South Oak Park Community Association?
Correct. Please hold while I type.
We'll take a quick straw poll while that's going on. Supportive of that condition? Supportive of that condition? Okay. We'll, we'll keep staff on this current path.
I think we have a draft here, which is more or less what I just said. The operator, and this will be as an ongoing condition, the operator shall maintain a staff point of contact, including a phone number, with the Lawrence Park Neighborhood Association and South Oak Park Community Association.
Great. And that's going under the conditional use permit?
Correct.
Perfect. Applicant, thumbs up? Getting a verbal or a visual thumbs up? Okay. Perfect. We have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation or any county council comments on our gyrations here?
Ready to vote.
All right. Please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja?
Yes, with the, sorry, but also with the understanding that the operator would do their best to prioritize Sacramento County residents, as you had previously stated during your comment.
That's, that's just a comment.
That's just a comment, sorry.
That's inside, that's all it can be right now.
It's just a yes.
Okay. Commissioners Borja?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano?
Yes.
Devlin?
Yes.
And Rathel?
Yes.
And the motion carries as amended.
Thank you. That concludes our contested portion of the agenda this evening, and we will move on to the miscellaneous portion. We have the planning director's report.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it. It's a pleasure to be back before you.
Thank you.
Really no report tonight. Look forward to, again, as always, a couple of upcoming meetings that look to be interesting, I'll say. So for the October 7th meeting, we've got right now three agenda items. One of those may be, well, they're all, well, one of those is contested, it's out in Orangeville. Moving ahead to October 21st, we have a hearing on a, two things. One is zoning code updates that are related to massage establishments. The county has been going through a lot of enforcement activity related to illicit massage establishments and other issues associated with them. Really robust engagement happening there. You'll hear more on October 21st. The other piece that's coming, or the project that's coming October 21st, is the Upper Westside Specific Plan. This is one of the pending master plans in the county, proposing general plan amendments to move the urban services boundary and urban policy area. This hearing is just a hearing on the draft DIR, similar to what we did with West Jackson a couple of meetings ago. I would expect there to be some robust public engagement on that item as well, so.
Thank you so much. Miscellaneous scheduling items. Anyone going to be absent the next couple of meetings? All right. And any other scheduling items for you, Todd?
Nope.
Perfect. Public comments?
And there's no additional public comments.
All right. Thank you all for your time this evening. We're going to go ahead and adjourn at 7:00 PM. Have a great night.